And please, get him another package, please. Pack of flashlights. I think I left one over there.
Are we gonna open this meeting back up? The first thing we have is citizens' comments, and I would ask if you have citizens' comments that you would approach the stand here, utilize the mic, address the council, say your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to share what you would have to share.
That's a nice change.
Change is good.
My name is Jerry Brown. I live at thirteen ninety Highway at Waynesville, Missouri. A couple things I'd like to point out, I was on the website a number of days trying to find information. I will point out, City Council minutes, first of all, you don't have meetings, minutes from May, June, July, and August, and the minutes that you have are not very clear. It's awful hard to pull out what's going on. Secondly, I'd like to point out is, we have this ARPA money we dispensed, we have one business that received fifteen thousand dollars from the city who's no longer in the city. It's a little concerning that we spent that money and they don't be treated like this. Also notice that on the small biz renovation and demolition, forty thousand was dispersed, likely we had a ten thousand dollars went.
I'm waiting until you finish with all of it you have to say.
Well, don't answer that question, go to the next one.
No, I want you to, I gave you three minutes to talk, I want you to be able to use all of your time. And I will address the questions.
You're treating it like that.
No, I'm gonna address the questions as soon as you-
Okay, the other general, what about the mural? What about the EV charging station, grant hasn't been approved, and I've just called meeting minutes, and I haven't seen anything on follow-up on that. All right, answer my questions.
Okay, so as far as the mural, that's still in working, that's not, that is based off of the Dollar Journal, they have been looking for someone to do the design so that they can, they're paying for it, so we can't really push them through that. And if you have, did I have any, do you have anything else about that?
Basically, they're still trying to find an artist of contract, signed a contract to get it done.
And the original artist they found was way above there?
They're looking at other people who are shooting.
Okay, now, as far as hot dogs, hot dogs did not receive fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, according to City Council, minutes did.
They, no, okay, go ahead, let's go ahead and, I'm gonna have the economic development chime in and share a little bit.
Hot dogs received nine thousand dollars from the Small Business Enhancement Program. They did not receive the other one thousand from their SVEP, and they were awarded an SVRB grant, which they will not receive because they no longer have a qualifying issue in city, so they only received nine thousand dollars from the SVEP.
Well, according to your website, all this money was dispensed.
It is not spent, it is reimbursed by the grant program, they did not get any dispersed funds until they give us qualifying receipts.
Well, then you better correct your city website.
Well, the information that we submitted, and we just submitted this in the newsletter, and it was outlined in there who received what, and all of the money has been allocated but not dispersed because there is a process to receive the money. They have to first have a contract, and then they would come in and get the reimbursement. So it's a process that they went through, all of the money has not been dispensed, but it has been allocated.
Well, this goes back to my first question, and my first comment was, these minutes from the City Council don't make anything clear.
Yeah, we did-
Somebody has to get on the City Council, find things out, they can't find anything out.
Yeah, so we're addressing it in two different ways. One way is our committee meetings, we will be sharing that on social media so that you can actually see the entire meeting yourself and get everything as it's stated. The other thing is, we have, we will address that, the minutes not being updated, so that's a good catch, so thanks, we'll go ahead and address that.
How about people who don't have access to social media?
That's why we sent out the newsletters. And then, we're not talking about, we're not talking about Facebook, so social media includes YouTube, any other media outlet.
All right, what if people don't have access to social media like Facebook and like the city website?
Then how would they get the minutes? Then how would they get the minutes off the city website?
Good question.
Right, so that's why we try to our best-
I was on the City Council website, looked at it, I couldn't find much information.
Okay, so, Mr. Brown, what we're gonna do is, I go on the radio every week and I try to give updates on everything. So we've been addressing it in several different media outlets. One is the radio, we've been selling out mailers, we have been placing it on the site, and if it's not updated, we'll fix that, but that's what we're trying to work on, it's communication, we can't get information out there to people, we gotta get them to receive it too. So we have the copies that are provided up at the front, if anybody needs a copy, they can call up here, we'll give them a copy of the minutes. So it's not an issue, you don't have to wait till the meeting to get the minutes. If you have an issue, you can request those minutes at any time.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other citizens' comments? Yes, sir, the same thing, just state your name, your address, you have three minutes to respond.
My name is James Proctor, address one twenty-six Shamet Valley Drive. I live in Cul-de-sac, apartment complex, and we have a problem with people driving too fast in our neighborhood. There's a mailbox right in the center of the complex, people just flying right through there. I talked to the complex about putting a speed bump, and they said, I need to kind of talk to the authority about that. And I said, what about, okay, we have children, and people are driving up and down kind of fast, can we put signs that say children playing or, or speed limits in ten miles an hour or something to that, because it's kind of dangerous. And, because one of these, the Cul-de-sac is on a hill, the top of the hill is where most of people stay, they come down, mailbox is down this way, they come down this way, and if someone not looking, they're looking at their mail, someone's flying out there, they're gonna get run over. So, it's kind of dangerous, I'd like to see if something can be done about it.
Is, that's the only issue you have, is the speed?
Speed, yes, speeding in the complex, and if something can be done, you try to feature it, either speed bumps or signs, so people understand that this is not a speed zone.
Okay, I'm gonna defer to John, because we talked about this, the repercussions about the speed signs and kid at play, that type of stuff, elaborate on that a little bit?
Some of the rules in the state have changed with children at play, and placing those signs along your right of ways could encourage that child to be playing in the street, so we've had some complexities in addressing that, but some of your other things, as far as the speed bump or something like that, that is an idea that I will definitely bring to roads and grounds for discussion.
Is it private property, what are you referring?
And, and I wanna check that, that was my other question, was if, if these roads are internal to your subdivision, and they may not be city right of ways, they may be actually private roads provided by, you know, by the apartment complex, and that's the other thing I need to address prior to, you know, stating what the city can do, is, is our ownership or the right of way of that, of that roadway.
Well, now, the school buses come up in there, so I would think that it's the city.
They, they can ride where they want to.
Oh, okay, okay, answered my question, what he was just addressing, because I was thinking, well, we're just a block away from the White House, you know, school district, so, we're, we're getting, getting, um, right there, so I was thinking that would consider part of the city, but if something can be done by it, because it's, it's getting a little dangerous.
For sure, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other? Same thing, sir.
My name is David Williams, I live at two one seven one five Ranch Road, Wayneville, Missouri, okay? My complaint is that, first, that gives the city, legislature, a compliment for doing a job, good, good, even though it took a month, man, it was good, well done.
Thank you.
Also, like, I would complain about, why can't we come up some animal off the street? Because that's bad. I don't know who said what, but somebody did something, we're announcing this, and I'm out there to look at you while they die, after they die, another compliment, job well done. Next thing I hear, I wanna hear, I wanna get out of Dodge, I think we need to do something about, and I know the cycle by the ramp, change it to twenty-five mile per hour. Anybody ever think about a bus, garbage truck running twenty-five mile per hour, and if you walk out in front of that thing, he ain't much time, he can't. So I, this is that, we need to think about that, where twenty-five mile per hour, why do we have a lock on our city dump?
I can, I can, you finish with your-
I'm done.
Okay, so with the city dump, we're actually looking at changing that to where you can have a code in each, so this is one of the things that we use the ARPA funds for, is we're gonna improve the fence, and we're gonna establish a code, the citizens in the city will not have to pay because you're a citizen, those who are outside of the, the city will pay, so it'll be another small stream of income for those that wanna use a stump dump, so that's the plan for that. We still, we've been working on this for about a long time. So we're thinking about the same things, we're trying to make it easier and move forward with the vision that we have to become smart cities and make it easier to get information out, information in, and that whole signing the key out thing, I feel the pain, I know.
Yes, it is.
Yes, we understand. All right.
I, I have a question, where is the twenty-five mile an hour sign that he's talking about?
Yeah, I heard you, I'm gonna be-
It's me, it's me, over here, way over here.
Oh!
Yeah, you were talking about that twenty-five mile an hour sign, that you think that twenty-five is too fast, where, where is it?
There's two of them out in front of Brentwood Terrace, there's some, I think it's two of them outside of Old Farmer State, that's one I'm concerned with. Because I think twenty-five mile per hour is entirely too fast, I drove school buses five years, I don't know something, but I also don't track the trailer, and I know you cannot stop a track and trailer in a short distance at twenty-five mile per hour. That's why I say I thank the city to relook at that, and I know I'm Mayor, Mayor Terry, and I don't accept it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other citizens' comments? All right, tonight we had a special presentation that was supposed to take place, but, and it was, actually, we have four council mem, well, two council members and two staff that have completed the MML, Missouri Municipal League Certification, and this is where they went above and beyond to go and learn more information about doing their jobs here within our city, so we wanted to commend Amanda Corin, who, who completed the basic certification of the MML. We also have Michelle Brown, who was a city clerk, and we also have Jen Worth, who is our, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just call her this, she's a community engagement specialist, y'all just need to align it with that title, but that's what she does, so they're out getting everything ready for hogs and frogs. The other person is myself, I did the basic Andy advance, and we are the first ones in the history of this city to go above and beyond and connect with our Missouri Municipal League to be better officials for our cities and staff members. So I wanted to bring that note, and I encourage every council member to go and learn, because I'm telling you, I learned a lot of stuff, and one of my favorite classes was the code enforcement class, so, and I've been looking at that, and we've been working on some things here in the city to be better, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. We did not have any boards and commission liaison reports at that point, we will have our standing committee comments, and we will start with Mr. Conley with utility.
Okay, the utility committee meeting was called to order at three thirty on September eleventh. Mr. Doyle told us about the, that the crew's been working for one and a half months of Summit, Summit Pass with installation complete, with the main service exits, road, stormwater crossing the Teton Pass, which I thought was in Montana. We received updates from the electric, water, wastewater, natural gas department, we had a copy, we received a copy of an email complaint, an individual was without power and was aggravated that he wasn't notified of the update, so we're gonna work on a system of notifying our citizens if they're out of power, that we're working on it, and the status of when they might expect new power. We had a closed session, and after that closed session, we approved an ordinance regarding bulk sewer drainage, and we sent it to this council, we'll consider it, next meeting October second at three thirty.
Are there any questions for Mr. Conley? Thank you, sir. We'll move on to economic development, Councilman Rice.
Yes, the economic development, the governmental affairs committee meeting came to order at five oh three P M. There were no citizens' comments, the, we discussed the September business spotlight, which is Bliss Salon, Doug Potts also talked about the Small Business Renovation and Demolition Grant Program, and he thought the funds had been depleted, but it turns out there was still five thousand dollars worth of funding left. The application for Bliss Salon was turned down in time, requesting funds for a new sign for a business, Mr. Potts recommended that we approve that application, the committee did so, and it motioned past. We also discussed the ARPA SVEP slash SVRB success stories, Mr. Potts provided two success stories for Homegrown Kitchen and Piney River Tap Room, so that program really worked out well. We also discussed some special events, a couple already passed, Back to School Extravaganza for the Waynesville High School parking lot, Patriot Day Festival on September ninth, also Community of Heroes, which went down September eleventh. We also discussed Hogs and Frogs, which is coming up this weekend, and we have Pumpkin Fest on October twenty-eighth. The next scheduled meeting will be held on October second at five P M.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, are there any questions for Mr. Rice? Next will be roads and grounds with Mr. Farner.
Roads and grounds met on September fifth, four P M. We had four citizens there to make comments, Mr. Jerry Brown was wondering why city workers were working to clear Modop right of way, and we explained to him that we wanted to cut the weeds and dress it up because Modop wouldn't get around to it in a fast enough time. Then we had Mr. Fensler and Mr. Apelar water from Rudolph Road area, Brentwood Terrace, came to talk about the drainage issue in Coleman's, which we talked previously to another one of their neighbors about the problems out there. Mayor Wilson stated he had a citizen request to repair a small section of Rock Hill Road where Lyle Curris meets it. Street Department gave us an update, told us that they've been busy hauling rock and tree trimming, doing sign maintenance in the city and getting up, getting caught up on patching the streets, and they purchased salt for the upcoming winter season, and I hope we don't need it, to be honest with you, I'd like a mild winter. Other business, Councilman Conley stated there's some potholes that need to be filled intersection of Summit Avenue, Ellis Avenue, and Blue Lake, and I think that it's probably been addressed, if not, it will be various avenues of business, we adjourned at six eighteen. Next meeting is scheduled October third at four P M, everybody vote.
Thank you, Mr. Farner, are there any questions? Next we'll have police committee, what is wrong with my, I need some water, police committee meeting, it'll be Mr. Conley.
I called a meeting to order at three thirty on September the seventh, we had no citizens' comments. The animal shelter was up, we had an update on the animal shelter, they were working on the floors, redoing the floors of the building, using ARPA funds, and it was supposed to be done by this time, someday. We got an update on Central Dispatch, Mr. Christen has six full-time employees, four are currently working, two are coming aboard next month. Fire Department update, Chief Shepherd said they've got new lights, put in, they've got in, they moved the heater in, they've done painting systems, they needed to wait on an antenna, hope to move in by the end of the year or the very first part of next year. Police Department, they have a new hire officer, Geiger, is officially on the road, Officer Bennett, who was a dispatcher, is now on the road, and they still have one position open, so if you're looking for a job, Waynesville Police Department is hiring. Also, we're given a list of the tentative dates for budget meetings, next meeting October the fifth, three thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Conley, any questions for police committee? We will have finance and human resource committee by Councilman Corin.
Thank you, sir. Our meeting was called to order at five P M, Councilman Farner sat in with Councilman Dills in her absence. We covered the cash flow, the bank statement, account status, and year-to-date budget. The city has completed sixty-six point six percent of the 2023 fiscal year, with expenses ending at sixty-six percent and revenues at sixty-three percent. City bank accounts have a total of five million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-four cents in restricted funds, reserve funds, and usable monies. Committee reviewed the CID sales tax collection summary and the progress of current ARPA projects. Mr. Doyle stated that the animal shelter will be closed to complete their floor renovations this month. Review of sealed bids, due to the new enterprise fleet, management vehicles arriving, the city has several vehicles that have been put up for bid. Sealed bids have been reviewed and opened until committee approved to accept the highest bidder for each vehicle. After a closed session, the committee adjourned at seven twenty-five, our next meeting will be held October fifth at five P M, everyone's welcome.
All right, thank you, are there any questions for finance committee? Okay, we'll move on to our Waynesville St. Robert Airport Board, and that'll be Mr. Doyle.
Chairman Lordson called the meeting to order at three o'clock, this was our annual appointment of board members for the Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board Meeting, George Lordson, Anita Ivy, and John Moore were selected as the board members appointed by the City of St. Robert, myself, Bill Taylor, Randy Beck, and Miriam Jones were selected by the City of Waynesville, with Doug Spatoning being appointed as, as the member-at-large. Budget was discussed with revenues at thirty-eight percent and expenses at thirty percent, a fuel sales spreadsheet was provided by Mike Guy, the airport operations manager to the board, Corolla Prut from Contour Airlines stated that operations within the airlines were, were going well, Burns and McDonald gave an engineering update, one of the updates revolved around the design charrette, which was a two-day process, and they stated that it was very productive, and they received a lot of good feedback from agencies and stakeholders within the airport. The airport terminal project follow-up meeting was going to be held September fourteenth at 2023, that actually got rescheduled and we were able to have two meetings at the same time. SOP marketing report was, was given by Aaron Yonkin, and Google ad numbers were up with the top three searches being airport flights, airport ticket booking, and flights today. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at three o'clock, and it will be held at the City of St. Robert.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Doyle, are there any questions about the airport from any of the council members? Mr. Farner?
No, I have nothing.
I, I saw you down there smiling, so I figured you was about to jump in.
I'm gonna go clean, lean in, you're like, roll big wall trap.
Okay, at this point of our meeting, we're actually kind of making some small changes to how we conduct our, our meetings here, and we're taking small steps forward, but we wanna open up the discussion for the council to talk about the issue that Mr. Conley alluded to, and it was pertaining to communication with our citizens. As many people know, I get, I get a lot of questions, and they ask, what is the biggest problem that you have? And, and the biggest problem is communication. Trying to get information to people that some people refuse to get on the internet, some people only have a landline phone, they don't have cell phones, so we're trying to reach out as many places as we can, as possible. So when it comes to notifying people for emergency services, we have to come up with a solution for that, so I'm gonna open up discussion and reserve my comments until afterwards, but I'm gonna give the council a time to talk about maybe some possible solutions for making sure we can notify all of our citizens whenever there is a utility outage or, or something along that line. What's the best way that you think that we should use to connect with our citizens in sharing that information?
So, I thought that that was the purpose of Code Red.
Okay, so I'm hearing-
So was that not?
Yes. That, that is the purpose of Code Red.
Okay, so, I, I, I mean, do we just need to put something into the newsletter that says to receive information about, and the following things, make sure that you're signed up for this program? I mean, I think that's the simple way. If you wanna really get it home, I guess we could send out a postcard, you know, that really has like a, some kind of Code Red symbol of some sort to draw their attention to say, hey, make sure you're signed up for Code Red, because he would have, he could have been alerted that way then.
And we also have, if everyone remembers, we had the, what is it, Reach?
Hyperreach.
Hyperreach, so Code Red will, will transfer over to Hyperreach in March of next year.
I wasn't tracking.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of throwing things out here, so, as they come up, but that, you're right, Code Red is supposed to be used for communication, but I wanna leave everybody else, go ahead. I don't wanna, I don't wanna take the mic and talk, I talk enough.
Mayor, I got a question. On, on our electric outages, they are not out for great lengths of time, so I would think by the time the information is sent out, the electric may be right back on.
Okay.
So, I, I see it more for long-term, like an ice storm, or a tornado, or something of that, notifying people.
So the use of Code Red, you say that's for more of a long-term?
That's what I've been thinking it should be, because, you know, our electric crew gets out there and gets the lights back on in forty-five minutes, odds are you haven't reached out to all the people that was affected, tell them what, why the lights are out.
I, I don't have Waynesville electric, so I don't know how long they were out this last time, but I don't think that they went out the same time La Cleve did, because I was in Waynesville when they went out and then went home, and ours was out, and we were out for hours, five or six hours, I don't know if Waynesville was the same in that instance, but I'm assuming that day is the one that he's referencing.
You're right, and, and most of the users that were out during that event were back on within the forty-five minutes, but we did have a small block of, of users who were out the five hours that Amanda was discussing, and, and I think from the administration side, we're looking for input from you guys on, you know, maybe you don't call in, maybe if you got on Facebook, or maybe if you got that Code Red text, you could go, oh, the city's tracking, you know, there's peace in that, right? And, and other outlets that Sean's looking for, so he, you guys can kind of give us directive of, okay, what's the steps we should follow during these outages, and we'll follow them every time, even if it's only forty-five minutes.
Could we, could we set up a phone? Because like La Cleve, I have an app, right? And I go to my app and I say, reported issue, and it says, it's already reported and we're tracking, right? But, again, we have those people that don't use smartphones and apps. What if we provide a number and we have just a recording setup that says we are tracking electrical outages in X, Y, and Z locations, right?
That's a great idea, that's great.
And we're working it. And then that way, it's back in the hands of the user. Like, if they need another source, they call that number and find it, and all we do is ask the mic call-in and set a recording up.
I'm not sure. I was sitting in the cold with no power, and my neighbor across the street had his lights on and everything happy. And I call, and I get a recording that says, "We're working on it." And I'd be very happy, because it's like, you know, that's...
I've yet to have an outage where it's on everybody.
Yeah.
I can give you some feedback on when I get... This is how notifications happen. John usually sends... He's getting notified by Daniel. He's getting notified by Daniel if it's electric. Then he sends me the information he knows. What I do is I immediately go on social media. I share that information on social media, and I say, "Please share." I have had people upwards of forty to fifty shares on the information, and what they say in response is, "Thank you for keeping us updated." So just kind of letting people know that you're already working on it, they look at it as a positive, as opposed to not saying anything. So it kind of leaves, gives everybody some kind of heads up and saying, "Hey, they are working on it." And I said, "I'll keep you updated as it goes on." So as they receive updates, I send it out. I don't have a lot of people on my page, so now if you are on social media, you need to follow my page and the city page, and I try to share the same information back and forth so we can get it across the social media platform. But that was one of the ideas, is to get a 1-800 number with the recording, and then we have to... So we can give to everyone that's in this community? Because I think there's some, maybe like Cable America does something like that. When their internet is out, they'll be like, "We know there's outage in your area, blah, blah, blah." So then you're like, "Okay." So you're talking about something along that cause.
I am.
Okay.
I like the idea of the text, sending it by text, because almost everybody reads their cell phone, and then sending another one when it has been... The outage has been fixed, and maybe like in Ed's case, it continues to be out in this area. I think, you know, because if you're not home and your electric goes out, then you're going to call your neighbor and say, "Hey, go check and see if my refrigerator's defrosted or whatever."
Okay, so I hear... Oh, you have...
No, I agree with all that. I think you need multiple ways of letting people know. People with the landlines, people with the cell phones. Had a recent event like that on the internet, and was sent a text message, and it would tell you when the next update was. They'd tell you, you know, it's out, we're going to work on it, we don't know how long it's going to take. Next update will be in forty-five minutes, and then we'd come back in forty-five minutes and say, "Okay, we found the problem. We're fixing it. It's going to be probably two hours." So at least you knew what was going on.
What organization was that?
Lumen Technologies.
L U M E N.
So is it possible this new program that's coming in behind Code Red? Red code, what? Is it Code Red? Because I feel like...
Code Red's on the...
I think Mountain Dew every time I stand, so that's why I'm like, "That can't be right."
Orange Crush.
Orange Crush. Yeah, let's go with that. That's my nickname when we did the Route sixty-six challenge. So the program that's coming behind that, is it possible maybe that there is a texting feature that we could sign people into for that reason?
It's the same thing, but it just expands, and you can also localize the concern, so you don't send it out to the entire community. You can actually pinpoint where the outage is, and you can communicate with them only so they don't become accustomed to hearing it, desensitized to that message. So that was one of the reasons why we're making that transition. Our contract is just not over until... So that'll be addressed. So what I gathered today, basically, because I'm going to close this out so we continue to move forward here, but that 1-800 number with some type of... And we can do the research on this, and we owe this back to you and the staff. We'll work together on trying to get it back, but maybe the text messages system, which we already kind of handled, and we'll get some more information about that. Social media, and the thing is, it's just really... I need the council's help with sharing that same information with your reach and influence across the board. If you are on social media, that they need to get locked in with Code Red right now. And if you don't have that information, we can provide that for you here, too. So text messaging, social media, and then I'm going to look at that Lumen Technology. So Lumen Technology with the recording, and it has the scheduled updates.
Well, that was a company, and that's how they did it.
Okay, yeah, so we can call them and say, "Hey, what kind of system?" So that's what I have on that, and that's going to close our discussion unless anybody else has anything else about the council discussion tonight.
Well, I've got a question or two. I don't know if this is the right time to do it. I was just curious as to who had our crew down working on the Ruby Doo Bridge at the same time the school buses and stuff were running. I've heard about that.
Yes, so this morning, they started early. They did have a breakdown, which extended the period, the time that they were scheduled to be out there. It did create some traffic issues for sure, but in sweeping the bridge, the sweeper had a minor malfunction that set him back this morning.
I was just curious, because he'd run downtown on Norris and Bennett Street a day or two before, and it would have been like three or four days before that, and he was down there running the same area.
Right, so we run, when we sweep the downtown area, we typically come in at six and try to be off the roads by seven fifteen-ish and out of that area. We do that for two reasons. One is traffic, two is parking. There's not a lot of cars parked, you know, through that area at that time.
Just that bridge. I know that how many cars go across that, but I also...
All of them. No way around it.
Any other question?
That's it.
All right, so we will go ahead and close the council discussion for this evening. We do have some items of consideration from some ordinances. The first proposed ordinance is HB twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, establishing bulk sewer rates.
Read the ordinance, please.
First reading and ordinance amending chapter six twenty of the municipal code of the City of Waynesville regarding sewer regulations by adding one section regarding bulk users, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance amending chapter six twenty of the municipal code of the City of Waynesville regarding sewer regulations by adding one new section regarding bulk users, fixing and effective date.
And entertain a motion for this ordinance? Motion by Mr. Conley? Second by Mr. Farnum. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next order of business is proposed ordinance HB twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, amending the employee personnel manual and the Waynesville Police Department general orders regarding overtime for traffic enforcement and grant opportunities. Please read the ordinance.
First reading and ordinance amending the employee personnel manual and Waynesville Police general orders in regards to grant funding through the Missouri Highway Patrol Highway Safety Grant Program, fixing and effective date. Second reading and ordinance amending the employee personnel manual and Waynesville Police general orders in regards to grant funding through the Missouri Highway Patrol Highway Safety Grant Program, fixing and effective date.
All right, entertain a motion for that ordinance? Motion by Mr. Rice?
I second.
Second by Mr. Hyatt. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dills?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight, we have any other business? City administrators report.
Going through the report, we've discussed in some detail the Waynesville Fire Station and the update on that. Would like to discuss a little more detail about the departmental budget meetings. The city has completed all the preliminary departmental budget meetings for the fiscal year 2024, except for the animal shelter budget, which is scheduled for Monday, the twenty-fifth. Preliminary budgets will be provided in October twenty twenty-three to the committees and to Waynesville City Council at the regularly scheduled council meeting set for October nineteenth. And after that, the final departmental budgets will be completed by city staff through the month of October and presented as final budgets during the month of November 2023 at the committee meetings and forwarded to city council during the city council meeting set for November sixteenth. And then the final thing I'd like to discuss, and we did a little bit of it tonight, but it is the revised meeting agenda, council meeting agenda. And I think this does two things. It adds value to the viewing audience, whether they're viewing through Channel twelve, whether they come back and view the meeting later on Facebook, YouTube, wherever they're picking up their information from. And you guys can answer a lot of questions by discussing amongst, you know, the council. And as an administration, we have questions, and we want to funnel them through the appropriate channels. But then, to get to council and to have that open discussion, you know, amongst all the council and the representatives, I think that just adds value to your meeting as it's broadcast by, you know, the Waynesville High School.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any questions? All right, we'll have council comments. The first shall be last, and the last shall be first. So we'll start with Councilwoman Corin.
First the last few times.
No, you was last coming to meeting today.
Oh, that is... That would be correct. I just want to thank everybody. Staff, been phenomenal. Don't forget, starting tomorrow evening, we have Hogs and Frogs down in the park. Appreciate each and every one of the council members that I sit up here with. And yeah, thank you for everybody in Waynesville for making our community a little better every day.
Well, as you may have noticed, it's getting darker earlier. We have kids out on the street. Pay more attention to your driver. We've already had one crossing car hit, which is one too many. Drive safely out there.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
Mr. Rice? Yes. I want to invite everyone out. I too want to invite everyone out to the Hogs and Frogs Festival this weekend. Starts tomorrow. It's in the Waynesville City Park. For a full schedule of events, go to www dot Route sixty-six, hogsandfrogsbest dot com. Come on out. There's something for you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Hyatt?
My comment is, I'd like to make a... Talk about the communication with the city and the citizens. The mayor puts out these week... I think the weekly or radio meetings you put out?
Yes.
I think that's a great thing to do. I think that's... We're moving forward on our communication with the citizens of Waynesville, so...
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Ms. Dills?
I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the nine-eleven celebration in the city park, and especially the Waynesville School District, who sent the junior high students to it. There were over five hundred students that attended, and most... They were all born prior, I mean, after nine-eleven. So I think it was a very good lesson for everybody, and wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farnum?
I'd like to remind the citizens out there that if there's any projects that they're thinking about doing to their home, such as some windows or storm doors or insulation, we still have money left in the American Recovery Act. They can get up to two thousand dollars towards those repairs. All they need to do is check the city off to get the information.
Okay, I'll end with this, just a caveat off what Mr. Farnum was saying, the Build It Better program. If you need some assistance with that, just get in contact with Amber. She's just sitting by the phone, looking and waiting. So just call in, and she'll help you fill out the paperwork so you can improve your utilities, hopefully lower those costs for you. But also, I want you to understand that it is based off of income, so make sure you read the packet, and we'll go that route. So we try to hit every area of our community. One other thing I want to talk about is this month, we not only do the city business, but we do want to take care of the people within our community. This is Suicide Prevention Month, and for those that do not know, we have lost five people this year due to suicide. So this is something that I think that as a community, we need to be more aware. And this is about opening up your eyes so that you can be able to be a beacon of help when someone needs it at that appropriate time. And I think we even had an issue here not too long ago that somebody was considering that. But to be able to know how to respond is very important. So we have a number that anyone can call. It's nine eight eight. That's for anyone that you find that has an issue for suis... That is having suicidal ideations, and they may communicate that to you. The other thing is, on Monday, we've put this information out for a while, but on the twenty-fifth, at OTC, there is a suicide prevention training. And one of my initiatives and goals, and this is prior to I even became the mayor, was I want to train a thousand people within this county to prevent suicide. So there's some training that is provided at OTC at six P M. You have one day to register, because this is certificates. You get one CE. This is based off of evidence-based training. So if you're interested in that, you can contact me. My phone number is five seven three eight five 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 nine five zero. Don't worry about it. The world already has it. So there you go. You can contact me if you're interested, and we'll get you signed up. But you just report over to the OTC. We partner with them a lot here at the city for that training. One other thing, a couple of other things. We have our owl here, which is going to help us to move forward to our next point of addressing this communication issue, and we'll be able to stream our committee meetings, and we will be uploading those on YouTube. So we're going to make small steps. Until we get our moderators in place, we're going to just record the entire meeting and place them on the YouTube channel. We will share that information with everyone, so you can go back and listen to it in its entirety. That's our goal, is to make sure that we are able to tell our own story. Also with communication, so that the council know that myself and Doug Potts, we met with Palassee County Weekly, was it? And then they came in, and they said they want to be here to share the message. So whatever we need to put out in the newspaper, we can do that. So that's another outlet that we're doing. So we're looking at five to six ways to get information to people. So what we need to do is, the people that are already locked in, we need you to help spread the word. You are the last leg of the race. So we need everybody's participation in the entire community to make sure everyone is informed. With the Hogs and Frogs, the opening ceremony is tomorrow at ten o'clock, right? The frog portion, I'll be singing the National Anthem. No, I'm just joking. But tomorrow at ten AM, we will have the opening ceremony with the singing of the National Anthem. So we want to encourage those that can come out to participate to come out. We have the cooking contest that's going to be tomorrow. Why am I talking about the food and stuff? But the cooking contest, with everything else that's going on.
Food is important.
So the cooking competition, World Food Championship, you'll be able to test the food and taste it. It'll be tomorrow. Well, Saturday at four P M is when it will start. I had that time memorized. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.